We're ready to go.
Prior to tonight's meeting, we have an indication offered by Commissioner Poole, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed on our community. We are here today to continue to side for the safety and well-being of our citizens, guide us in our decisions, all as possible in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President.
Mr. Poole.
President.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Ms. Twine.
Here.
Mr. Minder, having some technical difficulties, he should be with us in a moment, and Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of the meeting of April 27, 2020? What is your play?
This is General.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move to accept the terms of the April 27 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second. There have been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, we are holding this Sandusky City Commission meeting electronically. Commissioners and staff are intended to run it up on a variety of stakeholder occasions. We ask our audience to either submit their questions to their comments and ready to our Commission Clerk, Kelly Presser, and we will answer those that pertain to legislation as that legislation comes before us, as well as provide response to any other audience questions from the appropriate staff. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So can I.
Second. There have been a motion, and I think there have been a second discussion.
Second.
Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Mr. Presser, I know that we do have one audience communication via email to you from Ms. Johnson. I wonder if you could read that into the record at this point in time, and then as we get to the legislation, appropriate staff can deal with that.
Yes, Mr. President. Did you get one response from Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street, via email, asking about items C and D on the consent agenda? Why is the city transferring $192,000 worth of grants from Issue A Economic Development Fund to the Chesapeake Tiff fund after the funds were certified at the time of legislation that money would be in the Issue A Economic Development Fund? How many more grants from the Economic Development Fund are respected to be transferred to the Tiff? And that she is not in favor of debt rebounding against the Chesapeake Tiff, just so grants can be issued?
Thank you, Mr. Presser. As that question pertains to items C and D on the consent agenda, we will give to that post haste. Commissioners, we have four items on our consent agenda. Mr. Presser, will you read these?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was muted on here.
Item A is a change order number one with ABC IP Companies for the Venice Road and Pump Station Improvement Project, that is a D-dog only. Item B is approval for the 2019 replacement pages for the city's classified ordinances with WH Drain. Item C is an amendment to the grant agreement with Renaissance 2 LLC for 125 East Water Street, a change in the funding source only. And item D is an amendment to a grant agreement with Renaissance 2 LLC for 131 East Water Street, that is also a change in funding source only.
Commissioners, that has occurred. These ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole?
Yeah, I think we need to bring C and D down off of that, put them on the regular agenda.
That's fine.
That's what the questions were, I think.
We can move them to the regular agenda, Mr. Poole. We can have that discussion after the motion is passed in a second, but your call, Mr. Poole, will be glad to move to the regular agenda next year.
If they're to speak to him, we should bring them down, otherwise we're approving them before he has the discussion. So yes, please bring them down.
Excellent. Item C and D, we move to the consent agenda, move to the regular agenda. Commissioners, that has occurred. The ordinance, how do you wish to proceed on items A and B, I guess, are overlooked?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine?
I move to accept consent agenda items A and B, and declaring that all ordinances or resolutions as drafted and consented to the city commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in force to the section of effective informances and local resolutions whether they are in force with Section 13 or Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There are motions and a second discussion. Mr. Presser, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on those ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Those two ordinance are passed. Now turn to our regular agenda. We will start off with new item number one, which was formerly item A on the consent agenda.
Actually, item C is the new item one, and that is...
Is it the same?
Okay. That is an ordinance authorizing and approving a first amendment to the grant agreement with Renaissance 2 LLC in relation to the property located at 125 East Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, that has occurred. This ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move to adjourn this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There are a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Lasko, I believe that that question probably pertains to both of these items, and perhaps you can cover both those answers in your response.
Yes, Mr. President, two other questions raised by Ms. Johnson. And if it's okay, can I address both, what would be the item one and two?
I prefer that you do that.
Okay, wonderful. To refresh everyone's memory, this commission passed two grant agreements, one in 2018 and one in 2019. Those collectively were for $192,500 to fund the substantial renovations to two properties, 125 and 131 East Water Street. Those projects are still under construction and slated to be completed by the end of this year. One of the things that we've tried to do internally, though, is try to look for flexibility in our funding sources given the budget deficit and issues we're facing. So with that in mind, this legislation looks to take what is more flexible funding sources. The original funding source was the ED Capital Fund, which is less restrictive, among other things, and that it can be used throughout the entirety of the city. And we're looking to swap those out with Chesapeake Tiff funds, which, as we know, are restrictive, both in terms of where they can be used geographically, but also what types of things they can fund, mainly subsidizing private development and secondarily public infrastructure and public abilities. So this would look to swap those two funding sources, and also to get to answering some of Ms. Johnson's questions, Chesapeake Tiff funds for private subsidized development. That's $1.3 million for the Fike Building and $500,000 for the Cook and Huntley. We subsequently still committed $1.3 to Fike, but out of the $500,000 for Cook and Huntley, we have only paid out $150,000, and the other $350,000 for the Cook project has been rescinded by this commission. So with that $350,000 freed up, we would look to move a part of those funds to fund Mr. Harris and his partners' projects out of, thereby replenishing the ED fund by $192,500, which could either ultimately be used and saved by for ED functions if this commission and administration are comfortable later on in the year, or subsequently they can also be used to assist with the budget deficit that we know we are facing at the moment. So we're really looking to just create flexibility for the city and the commission by swapping out the funding sources.
Thank you, Mr. Lasko, and discussion, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I think right now every institution in America is looking to conserve cash, and I was delighted when I saw staff taking the commission to preserve cash so that we have options later in the year as things unfold. So maintain the commitments that we've made, but if the deficit is as large as we fear it may be, they don't have that ability to spend on police and fire and the other necessary things that we need to keep the city running.
Additional discussion, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
From what I see, Mr. Lasko's explanation, the money that was freed up of those two projects, those projects are still ongoing, we still have to pay that, or still going to pay that money. The Cook Building has not gone away. So we're spending this money twice, and quite frankly, it's not, I don't think it's necessary to do this today because Renaissance 2 isn't going to be due for that money until it's completed, as they said, it's at the end of the year. I think it's foolish to commit today to paying interest, which is what it amounts to, we'll be paying interest on money that we're supposedly investing for development. Why would we unnecessarily do that? It's just as simple for us, we don't have to do anything now, and until we have, and we'll start at our workshop meeting coming up next week, we need to identify what we're going to do for the entire year, or at least project some types of expenditures. The idea of freeing up money, and this is Mr. Lasko says, oh, we're going to use it on some other projects. We have prioritized projects, you know, the money we're going to have, and I suggest that we just leave this alone. Two weeks ago, or a month ago, we changed the project, we're supposedly going to review getting bonds for the road projects. Well, it's 30 days, and that was the number that was thrown out that was mentioned at the time of changing the bonds to pay for road projects, and here we are, 30 days out, and now the word's been said. I'm not interested at this point in all this flexibility that we don't necessarily know what our situation is. I think this is a little bit reckless, and it's definitely not needed to be done. We could do this in November if that project was about to begin, about to be over, and it needed to be paid. No need whatsoever to do it today. Thank you.
Commissioner, further discussion. You do not have the ability to look into a crystal ball and answer Ms. Johnson's question regarding how many additional projects...
I'm trying to... Be applying... I'm muted, it's...
I'm sorry, Commissioner President, I was not able to hear your break.
I was asking, I know one of Johnson's questions, of Mr. Lasko, was, could you tell her how many additional projects are going to be applied to these Tiff dollars? I just learned if you had some way of conjuring up an answer for that, if you do, I'm going to ask you to pick a lottery number for me for tomorrow evening.
Yes, Mr. President, there would be roughly about $160,000 of formally committed funds that are no longer committed through the rescinding of the Cook Agreement, but ultimately what this commission and administration choose to do with those funds, I can't speak to it at the moment.
That's it, as I presume, thank you, Mr. Lasko. Additional discussion, Commissioner. Mr. Presser, you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, will you present item number two, formerly letter D on the consent agenda?
Yes, the second item is an ordinance authorizing and approving a first amendment to the grant agreement with Renaissance 2 LLC in relation to the property located at 131 East Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, that has occurred. This ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Minder.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14.
Chairman, just a question.
I believe Mr. Lasko has enlightened us on that. I don't believe we need to hear from staff unless there are additional questions. Is that Commissioner Poole?
Yes, I do have one, just from Mr. Lasko. The fact that we are no longer, or abandoning, or leaving, plus one, how much money is in that fund right now? We'll ask the finance director, either one.
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole, and also we defer to Michelle. She wants to weigh in with the exact number, because I believe there was a question either earlier this day or late last week in terms of what money is in the account, and my response at that time was effectively zero, so there's no additional funds in that account that are uncommitted to projects, but we certainly have funds in the account that are committed to projects and just not have, just have not been dispersed, but I know Michelle has that number right off the top of her head, but effectively, that's able to be programmed.
More or less, that would be fine, and that would be exact. At least, I think that you go back and forth.
Through you, Mr. President, this is Michelle. The exact balance in that economic development fund at the end of April is $147,205.
Okay, and Mr. Sharon, I want to point something out. In the presentation, we talked about we should do this because of the spring up funds from the Cook Building, and I believe, I think, Fike Building. The funds that we have, the money for this project is already sequestered, it's set aside. So the funds that we talked about that this is going to free up, if they're there, which is why I asked how much money is in the account, it's already there. We're spending, the wording of this sounds like we're spending this money twice. This is not, that's why it doesn't work for me. I recognize the money's already, and you talk about funds that we have released and made available from past projects that didn't go through. They're not related, the money's already, these are two separate parts of money that already exist. And I imagine, and I realize this is difficult to explain, so, but I still don't know, and I'm just not going to make that point.
Additional discussion, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
This isn't difficult to explain, this is very simple. Instead of spending the money right now on what's ultimately an operating fund, we're going to preserve the money to use later on, and we're going to use bond funding instead, and we move cell lines when we have record low debt, general obligation debt, and when we have record low interest rates. So I think it's a very prudent move by the Stafford.
Additional discussion, Commissioner. Mr. Presser, you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance, Mr. Presser.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, you present item number three, formerly item number one on the regular agenda.
Yes, item number three is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed JCPark restroom project, approving the specifications and estimated cost thereof, and directing the city manager to receive this in relation there to, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, that has occurred. This ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. There are a motion and a second discussion. Finally, restroom at JCPark.
Mr. Chairman.
Would that be Commissioner Poole?
Yes. Five minutes ago, we were saving money. Now we're spending $124,000 on bathroom repart. It really doesn't track, but now...
Any further discussion, Commissioners? Mr. Presser, you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, you present item number four.
Yes, item number four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with Carpenter, Marby Transportation Incorporated of Coates, Ohio, for the health, behavior, safety, and improvement project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Communities, that has occurred. This ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Would that be Commissioner Harris?
Yes. I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There are a motion and a second discussion. No discussion. Mr. Presser, you pull the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Commissioner, you would, please present item number five.
Yes, item number five is an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of economic development revenue bonds of the city under Section 13, Article 8 of the Ohio Constitution, and Chapter 165 of the Ohio Revised Code, to pay costs of a project defined in Section 165.01 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of creating or preserving jobs and employment opportunities, and improving the economic welfare of the city and its residents in the state of Ohio, providing for the pledge for that purpose of certain non-tax revenues, establishing certain funds of the city, approving related documents, and declaring an emergency.
Communities, that has occurred. This ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Minder.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with, under Section 13, Article 8 of the Ohio Constitution, and Chapter 165 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Commissioner... Second.
Commissioner President, this is Trevor.
Yes, sir, Trevor.
This was a little confusing, because we talked about Section 13 of the U.S. Constitution, whereas this would be passed under 14 of the city charter under emergency.
If you'll hand your motion, Mr. Minder, Commissioner.
I will. I'm a little confused by that. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I checked today, I will go on this, I checked with our director.
Excellent, Mr. Waddington. Commissioner Murray, I believe you have a statement, perhaps?
Well, I do, Mr. Chairman, I must abstain from voting on this due to my relationship with Citizens Bank.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. Further discussion, Commissioners. Mr. Presser, you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I'm saying.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I'm saying.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda items. Now we'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Mr. President, Commissioners, audience, and staff, I will start with the donation. Firstly, I donate two cents of flags, U.S. Air Force, POW, U.S. Army, U.S. Navy, U.S. Marine Corps, U.S. Coast Guard, the Veterans Park, the Seacoalary County Veterans Memorial Park Committee, which is $347 in kind value, and ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
There are a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
Also, a donation of $1,000 from anonymous donor for the purchase of PPE, and ask for a motion to accept that donation as well.
Second.
There are a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved again with our thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to new and old business, starting with administration. Just an update that Talon Field Work has been appointed as the city of Sandusky's representative to the Erie Metropolitan Housing Authority, just appointed the city manager. This appointment is regenerable of vacancy, which expires in December of next year. Also, I'd like for a motion for permission for the Sandusky Police Department and Sandusky Municipal Court to each apply for a 2020 coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant from the Office of Criminal Justice Services. Each grant will request funding to purchase various technology, including tablets, cameras, hardware, software, conducting meetings, interviews, and training, to avoid personal contact when appropriate, and do so virtually when this grant is awarded, and will come back in legislation, and ask for a motion to... I ask for a motion to allow us to need to apply or to apply for that grant.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. And here is no objection, that motion is approved.
Moving on to the Fire Department. Just to note, the Fire Department continues to do a lot of community involvement, including joining Old Town on Sunday evenings for their Sunday, Monday parades. And will continue to participate in drive-by birthday parades for all agents, which have been well received by the community. The Fire Department would like to apply for a 2020 AFG COVID grant, an amount of $19,645.34, which has a personal match and a cost of $650 to hedge on grant resources. This month, complete items already purchased for COVID and items needing to purchase for COVID. The grant deadline is May 15. The grant will come back with legislation. I'd like to ask for a motion to allow us to apply for that grant.
Second. A motion and a second, I believe, discussion.
Second, sir.
We got a second, good discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Here is no objection, that motion is now approved.
Thank you. Also, given the 2020 CARES Act, help the community services provide a relief fund. $38,851.49 was deposited on April 10. These funds can be used for any expenses COVID-related, including hazard pay in overtime today. This month, we've received, for this first round of funds given up, it's possible we can receive more funds in the second round. Moving on to the Finance Department. Next finance committee meeting will be Friday, May 15 at 8:00 a.m. It can be viewed via the city's Sandusky YouTube channel. Also, the municipal compact filing deadline has been extended until July 15 of this year. And just a reminder, the city will no longer have an employee able to assist with filing municipal income taxes. And residents with issues can contact Rita at 1-800-860-7482, or at www.ritaohio.com. Tax payments can be made in the customer accounting office at City Hall at 240 Columbus Avenue. Moving on to public works. I made money at the intersection of Wayne and Neal Street, which will transition to a four-way stop. Additionally, in coming weeks, additional streets of traffic will be reinstalls, pedestrians, signage, crosswalks along various intersections on Hancock and Wayne Streets and the Sandusky Transit Hub. These upgrades are meant to improve pedestrian safety and traffic flow, and build on a pilot project in the community engagement process that took place last year. Also, the 2019 water quality report has been distributed. Big out of the water continues to exceed all established drinking water standards. Please refer to the city's website for more info. Moving on to community development. The Economic Development Committee, the meeting for May 12 is canceled, as are all meetings until further notice. An update on the water street loss, which is a project taking place at the former power building site. Phase one of the 13-unit townhome project is near completion, which includes the first of two five-unit townhome buildings. The first movements in the project will occur in May and carry on through June. The developer's set of the plan to begin updating should work on phase two in late June or early July, which will include the second of the two five-unit townhome buildings. And also an update on the Cook Building. The city recently took a conference call with representatives of the building owners regarding an upcoming demolition. The purpose of the call was to repeat proposed timeline of activities and give an understanding of the structural needs of the contractors and impacts on traffic and adjacent property owners. Contractors are currently finishing up work shoring up the shared walls between the main Cook Building and buildings to the north and east. Once completed, the contractors will begin to strategically separate the Cook Building from the intact structures. Finally, gas demolition site clearers will occur. Gas demolition is currently anticipated to occur in very early June and will take one week to complete. After demolition, contractors will need approximately three to four weeks to remove debris from the site. The city contractors and owners will be working on a press release in the near future on the logistical map showing staging areas, dangerous acres to the site, and street closures. Finally, the owner will allow their architectural team to continue with the final touch on proposed plans, the drawings, or eventual development on site. Moving on to the Planning Department. Community development block grant updates. Due to COVID-19, the CBG 2020 Annual Action Plan approved submitted was extended. CBG 2020 allocations for $743,096. Also, the city has been awarded $437,300 for combat effects of COVID-19. This new money will be part of the 2020 plan. City Commissioner will hold a public hearing on May 26 at 5:00 p.m. regarding the CBG's 2020 action plan, amendment to the citizen participation plan, and the five-year consolidated plan. The draft will be made available on May 12 and confirmation will be taken from May 18. And we can, it can be submitted by email or by regular mail to City Hall, CBG 240 Columbus Avenue, Sandusky, Ohio 44846. I'd also like to request a motion to set up a hearing for May 26 for consideration of CBG FY20 Annual Action Plan and the amendment to the five-year consolidated plan and the public participation plan. Could I please have a motion to accept that?
Second.
I believe there's been a motion and then a second to set a hearing for that, would that be correct?
Yes.
And I tell you, with that motion in place, I ask for a discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. And here is no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for studying that.
Also, an update. To allow for social distancing is required in the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff who likes to do businesses is not allowed to utilize expanded dining in public-private areas. This includes researching whether or not it will be prudent for the city to temporarily close streets to vehicle traffic or expand an outdoor dining establishment not adjacent to potentially closed streets. Look at utilizing sidewalks, park space, adjacent parking spaces, et cetera. Staff hopes to have more information on this. And in the interest of businesses within the community over the next few days, as most of the Commissioners I'm sure know, outdoor dining is permitted by the governor as of this coming Friday. And then restaurants will be able to open to the public indoors with restrictions on May 21. Many cities throughout the state have been looking to try and close streets to restrict access to streets so that they can use some of that additional right when restaurants can serve a larger number of people. We're still needing social distancing guidelines. Our goal is to get something in place. We want to do outreach and impact state workers and the community. But we do want to be able to move quickly as the governor's announcement, you know, gave relatively short amounts of time. We've heard that, again, many other cities are doing this, but what we're trying to do is to provide as much flexibility for a lot of small businesses that we know we're really struggling during these last few months to give them a chance to serve as many customers as possible. And again, we don't know what specific solution we're going to recommend, or we just know that we're going to spend this fee, trying to come up with as many of those as possible, and then come back from there. And in order to get the rest of them permitted, if there's any more questions on this, I mean, if you have any answer now. The commission meeting for May 27 is scheduled at 4:30. The board of zoning approvals meeting for May has been canceled. The later night commission meeting for May 27 is at 4:30 canceled. All the meetings that will be held will be held virtually or, if feasible, at City Hall. For recreation, the Sandusky Rec Department purchased chess boards and set a deep discount to give the city residents to learn the game and play during the COVID-19 pandemic. Over 70 board were distributed through the drive-through meal forum at Chuchu, Chuchu, my extreme. Sandusky Rec provided five instructional videos throughout the week on their Facebook page. Several chess sets are still available. As of interest of the county chess, can do so with recreation superintendent Jason Warhol at jberlin@ci.sandusky.oh.us at US 4419627 by May 33. And my final update for the evening is that the Rec Department has opened a normalized survey on the survey for city residents during COVID-19. The survey asked residents with their likelihood of participating in interest-based programming or revised summer program programming would be during COVID-19. TPS colon backslash backslash R G I D S backslash O B P M N A O. At the Rec Department, it's Facebook, Twitter pages, through the end of the week, that includes our box to see if they have any answer or any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Questions, those questions for the city manager.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Yes, for clarification, are we still on for Monday at 6:00 for our board session, May 18?
I, I believe that we are, but it will be, uh, it will be, uh, it will be a not in person meeting, from my understanding. Excellent. That answer your question, Mr. Waddington? Mr. Waddington, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yes. Okay, go ahead.
So, so we're on for six, six to be on my button. There's some questions for the city manager.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I don't have a question. However, I would just like to, you know, show my support for the, you know, idea behind expanding, you know, the dining areas for many of our small local businesses. First and foremost, I mean, you know, it could certainly help, you know, in regards to the bottom line for many of our small businesses, but perhaps also just get people out and about. I know many of us are looking to find some sense of normalcy and input, and I think that this would certainly, you know, provide us to set up the right direction to help achieve this, so, so I think it's an awesome idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. I agree. I think the message that we want to send to all of our restaurants here in the city is that we want to encourage them. And by encouraging them, I mean, we will make, we will bend over backwards to make any system that they put into place that is safe. We will make, we can make that work, we will help them make that work. So ours, ours should be a hand, a hand down and hopefully a lift up. Additional questions for the city manager?
Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Additional thoughts on that? I completely agree with Commissioner Harris. And I think that it will be up to a P J and Health Department, this is our team, to decide what is safe. And that is not really, as an initial matter, the city's responsibility to make that determination. And I think that we, we, this isn't just focused on businesses. I mean, I'm, I'm reading in various municipal kind of publications right now that it's time for cities to be flexible in terms of supporting businesses in different ways. So, for example, I remember growing up that there were all sorts of neighborhood restaurants, bakeries, and, were there any coffers around? There were coffers back then. And, and I, I think that, you know, one of the things I think we're likely to see is a decentralization. And we are likely to see some people, you know, setting up some shops, bakeries, or that kind of thing in our neighborhoods. I think we want to support that. So I would encourage staff to be thinking about how it is that we can make at least temporary changes that might transition to permanent changes that make our neighborhoods a little bit more vibrant and allow people to purchase what they need in a much smaller, less congested setting. I think that the virus, from everything on our reading, is going to be with us for quite some time. My biggest fear is that we end up with a big surge in everything, and we're right back where we were. So, just some thoughts.
Thank you. If there are no further questions for the city manager, we'll move to items of new business.
Mr. Chairman.
Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
Yes, I've got a quick, probably taking 30 seconds. My personal 3,000-foot view of what's going on.